All right, the time is six o'clock. I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the city council, the city of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. All right, we're going to move right into our agenda, which is agenda number two for public comments. If you wish to at this time, address council, please step up to the podium and state your name and go ahead and speak.
Got to pick this thing up. Anyway, I'm Jack Morris, 1048 Sunflower Trail. And I would really like to congratulate Sergeant Brownlow on his promotion. That's not a slot. I know this from my experience. I earned mine. That's an earning. A slot to give me. Might as well take a participation trophy. Yeah. So on another note, y'all are due to discuss our city director, and even if it is private. Well, let me tell you a wonderful story. I CNN, by the way, I made my promise. When you're guilty of something, you need to be held accountable. I got y'all, him, city director, and Barbara Wilson for state jail time. That is Class B mince demeanor. Not only you think I'm not going to run some people into the ground. Number two internationally, Nielsen, that's globally. And I was treated like, you know what? Go sure, do a break in, beat up Vicki with the cops. That's 75 years of excellence. Bad enough, he went from 15 to one on square miles. Yeah, winning formula. Ever since we lost Sarah Wilson, I apologize, but they have a right to know the history of the history to which I was entrusted by the elders. You can't keep burying stuff. I know about Trish Houston. I know about Sean Ford and all their wicked ways. Well, that's going to come out too. I want to say thumbs up on that. It's time for others to have their voice and thank you.
Thank you. If any bills switches to speak at this time, please step up to the podium. All right, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is staff reports, beginning with the administration report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public. Want to report, so our new fiscal year, fiscal year 2026 has begun. The budget has been posted on the website. If anyone's interested, it's under the finance section. So the admin administrative and public works office transitions are completed, and everyone that's in a new role is settled in. Some other good news, our new audit firm, Brooks and Watson, they have completed the draft of the FY23 audit. So I'm hopeful that we will be able to take that to budget and finance next month and hopefully have that on the December 2nd agenda for acceptance by the city council. Another project that's underway is the .gov migration project that's being handled by Univista. We did submit, it's being affected by the federal government shutdown, though they're not processing new domain name requests. But hopefully that's, that will move along quickly. But the sunsets valley.org site will automatically, or there will be a redirect message to redirect folks to the .gov. And if you email any employee or council with a .org email address, it will automatically forward to the new .gov. So we'll, we'll keep you all and keep the public informed of that project's process or progress. I'll highlight some upcoming events. So this Saturday is the movie screening in the city hall backyard. They're going to show Monsters, Inc. I forgot what time the event begins, but it is on the city website. So Arbor Day this year is going to be at the Savannah Trail. That's Friday, November 7th. And then, once again, we're the city hall and I believe a location on Pillow Road is going to be two locations for the Austin studio tour. That's two weekends in November, Saturday and Sunday, November 8th and 9th, and then again on November 15th and 16th. Also, thank you all for confirming, council, your availability. The city council retreat this year will be on Friday, December 5th. And we plan to have our regular meeting on that Tuesday before on December 2nd. And the plan is to cancel the second meeting in December, the December 16th. So if we decide to do that, that will be on consent item for the November 17th. And just as a reminder, the next meeting is not, not the fourth, because that's election day. It's going to be Monday, November 17th, because that is our deadline to canvass the election. So just a reminder about that. And I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the report.
Council, any questions for the administration report? Thank you. Moving on to public works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just highlighted a few items on there. We've completed our annual lead in copper testing where we work with residents to collect some samples and we send it off for testing. Everything was in compliance and those residents who did the testing should be receiving the results. Well, probably today through the mail. We've also been working on just some finishing touches on some different projects around the city. I hope everybody can come out for Arbor Day to come plant some trees on November 7th. But I really want to just thank all of the public works department, some of our summer interns, some of our summer youth program participants, and everybody else who kind of helped to pull the city hall backyard together. We, they worked on that and they were able to get that done October 7th so that we could have the opening for National Night Out. And they've did a really great job and I would just like to thank all of them for that. And the other thing we're looking at is, we do have a proposed location for the council ring. It's going to be over here, just outside these doors over here that we would like to look at and see as a new location for the council ring. So we think it'll be a good spot. That'll be here near city hall bin. So if anybody has any questions about that, I can show them after the meeting. But if anybody has any questions about anything else on the report, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you to the public work staff and the rest of the city staff for the backyard space. I think it's a beautiful space and I'm excited to see when I walk by families out there playing. And I think it's going to grow in, in interest around the community as well. But it was a lot of fun to see it open and share that with the rest of the residents in the larger community here. So. Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, the backyard is awesome. Sergeant Gil saw me at the National Night Out and said, you know, thank council for doing it. And I said, if anything, I fought to make it as good as it is. So it was just like, I, but I've been so surprised at like how many people have been using it. It is full almost every day and you guys did an amazing job. So congratulations, I guess. You guys have just, it's just like so awesome. Like all the kids from the neighborhood just like get on their bikes and just like go meet, go meet there and then like raid the candy containers in here now.
I was going to ask, because I had one, one family that was out there asking about the trail system. Are we able to put like a trail, is that going to be one of the plans is to put a trail map like we do at the other side?
Yeah. So the trail signs are being ordered. So the trail signs will all be coming in. It'll be probably, probably by the end of the year, but it takes about six weeks to get those in.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilor Medikas.
I want to also congratulate Public Works and PD for the great night of National Night Out. And the combination of opening of the backyard was a really great event. And I think Carolyn, are we also going to have a map up on where the art is in the city?
Those are actually in, so those will be installed, I think, soon. So yes.
Great. Thank you. Great job, everybody.
Map, just to add, that map's on the website too, so it looks really great. It's under, visitors under art and public places.
Any other questions for public safety? Oh, sorry, public works? All right, moving on to public safety with our new sergeants. Congratulations again.
Thank you. Good evening, again, council, mayor. So yes, we had a really, really good turnout for National Night Out. Of course, the opening of backyard kind of helped with that. And maybe in the future, we might add on another kind of festival or something with National Night Out, like pumpkin painting or something like that to boost the numbers like we had the other night. Currently, we've been seeing a little uptick in camping, illegal camping, with people experiencing homelessness, specifically in the areas of Jones and Westgate. Our officers are monitoring that area and making sure that we make contact and give assistance and help to those folks that are having problems. And it's to note that unless they're violating a city ordinance or state law, we're not going to be making contact with them. If they're just hanging out in the park, working on their bike or walking through, we don't, we don't try to make contact with them unless there's some type of law that's being broken, specifically our camping ordinances. We've had an uptick in some wildlife calls in reference to possible rabid raccoons. None of the raccoons came back as rabid. And if there are questions in regards to if we get animals tested for distemper, we do not. We just specifically go the rabid route. So thankfully, none of the animals that were tested that came in contact with any dogs or people's cats came back as rabid. And we're continuing to do our state mandated training throughout the department for alert. Currently, everybody is updated with alert and we're going to look at getting some in-house active shooter, train the trainer training. So we, we have in-house folks that can train our, our people accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to ask as a follow-up to this last weekend, but what was the feedback in terms of the Daisy Dash and how it was laid out this year and anything that we need to work on for the future? Both from PD's point of perspective, but I know also they were at city hall this time staging.
So we've had, we had negative complaints and we haven't had any outside feedback other than our in-house feedback in regards to maybe putting some barriers up on Brody to help folks, you know, remain safe as they're turning onto the sidewalk on the Brody so that cars can kind of stay a little bit further away. Other than that, we, I don't think we had any medical calls. We had two vehicles that got onto the track by accident from Burger Stadium and it was mitigated by officers directing them away from, from that area. So out of the few years that we've done it, this was pretty successful and we hope to mimic this same track and the same setup next year, other than adding some more barriers.
Thank you. And thank you for the PD department for supporting that. For those of you that weren't in the area, we had hundreds of people, you know, show up for the race and it was a big crowd. They actually used city hall as the, or the parking lot out here for all the vendor booths and the playground. They were actually part of the advertisement for this year saying, you know, there's a new playground. We got to run on the trail of Savannah Trail as part of the, the new site as well. So as long as we can keep this minimal impact to the residents, you know, I think it's still a really valuable event for us in the city. But I was excited that it went smoothly and we had a new course that, you know, I think, you know, showed off a lot of the city as well and the new playground as well. Do you have a question? That's for Councilor Johnson.
Thank you. Congrats on the stripes, once again. So out of the last public safety meeting, we talked about the crossing guard that used to be at Master Sergeant Bob Horgan and Jones. I was like, I've actually been talking to the crossing guard that's currently at Westgate, who is interested in moving over, but then the consolidation plan immediately came out the next day. And so before she kind of changes her, like where she works and everything else, we're just seeing where that goes. But then I also wanted to just kind of bring forward the, so again, we use these flock cameras in the city and I've been a supporter of them in general. But I just wanted to kind of bring light, bring to light the, the Amazon Ring cameras, which many people here might have. I know I have it. There's like this partnership now where anyone that has flock cameras can just like gain access directly to the Ring cameras. And you, as a homeowner, like pretty much don't even have a say in that. So it's, it's an escalation. I, I hope from RPD that we just continue to use the current flock cameras the way that we originally envisioned, that went through public safety, that went through council and everything else. And do, do not, do not use that feature or whatever. And that'll be on the next public safety, but I am now probably going to like just cancel my Ring subscription because that's not what I vaulted into. But that was it.
Thank you. Any other questions for public safety? All right, thank you. Now, moving on to agenda number four, which is council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. And with Councilor Rosengarten out, we default to our mayor pro temp.
Motion that we act on consent for items five, six.
Motion that we act on consent for items five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10.
All right, so the motion is to approve on consent, item number five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10. Does anybody want to pull one of those items? Counselor Johnson?
There's public comment on number eight. I just want to address it, but.
We will pull item number eight. Any other items? All right, so the motion is to approve on consent, item number five, six, seven, nine, and 10. All those in favor, or is there a second for that motion?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we approved on consent. The minutes from the September 16th, 2025 regular meeting. Item number six, additional appointments of residents to standing committees for the current fiscal year ending September 30th, 2026. And Council, you should have received the additional changes that had come out since the backup. Thank you to all the volunteers that serve on committees and for now having fully staff committees as far as quorum and meeting our code requirements. Item number seven, approval of a temporary special use permit for Cap Metro to host an event at the Tony Burger Center November 10th through 18th, 2025. Item number eight, approval of a resolution denying Texas Gas Services requested rate increase and requiring the company to reimburse the city's reasonable rate-making expenses. And item number 10, approval of a proclamation declaring November 7th, 2025 as Arbor Day in Sunset Valley. And I don't have the proclamation in front of me, otherwise I might read it out. Go and plant some trees, people. Go and plant some trees. It's good for the city and the environment. All right, that's going to take us to agenda number eight. This is going to be a public hearing and consider approval of a short-form subdivision at Three Pillow Road under section 150.303 of the Land Development Code. And I will go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:18 and we will hand it over to our staff for introduction to this item.
Mayor and Council Jerry Restovin, the Development Services Manager. As you said, this is a application for a final without preliminary subdivision, also known as a short-form subdivision. Staff has reviewed this, determined that it complies with all city and state laws and therefore we recommend approval. And I'll just emphasize one more time that this is for a single property that's becoming a single lot. I know it's called a subdivision, but that's just what it's called. It's essentially just making sure it's the obligation of the city prior to issuing a building permit to be sure the property is legally subdivided, to make sure that, for instance, water and electricity infrastructure are all there. So we've reviewed it and we recommend approval.
Thank you. And I know that one public comment was, I think, looking at this as a potential subdivision of the property, which is what it's not. So hopefully that addresses the concern that was raised on our OpenGov site. Anything else that you wanted to add, Counselor Johnson?
No, the one comment, I talked to that resident and then I talked to two other residents that was the reason that they left the comment and just said, "This is almost administrative in nature," so not to really worry.
Yeah, and so I was going to invite at this time for the public hearing, the public to, if they wish to address Council, to go up to the podium and state their name and speak to Council.
Okay, I'm Susan Koble. I live at Four Pillow Road and I'm here for that, the Three Pillow Road situation. I just didn't, we got a letter in the mail. They said there was a meeting tonight about it and I just want to make sure that I understand. It's still going to be one house, one lot? Yes? So there's no change? So we're good? Okay, thank you.
All right, if you wish, yes, please go up to the podium.
I'm Shane Riley. Susan, I'm the property owner at Three Pillow and I'll introduce myself and shake your hand later. But yeah, the intent is 100% to build a house for myself and my family. You know, it's called a subdivision form, but we're not intending to do anything else. We're not subdividing it further. I don't think that's legal, but yeah, we hope to build. It won't be in the same spot as before. We're still working through the design with civil engineering architects and stuff, but that's the plan.
Awesome. Our biggest concern was the house next door to us over at Three Pillow Road.
I'll speak with you all after the meeting if that works. All right, thanks, Counsel.
Thank you and welcome to the city. Any other public comments before I close the hearing and we move on to the actual vote for the item? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:21. Counsel that allows us at this point to consider approval, if there's a motion. Counselor Johnson?
I move we approve the short-form subdivision at Three Pillow Road under section 150.303 of the Land Development Code to allow for the creation of a single legal lot. Do I have to mention the, nope?
Nope. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Counselor Medicas, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes and that's the next step in the process, so hopefully everything else goes well with you guys. All right, we are going to move on to our next item. We're going through these pretty quickly, so. Item number 11, which is Presentation and Possible Action on a Resolution Supporting Continued Operation of Sunset Elementary School. And so instead of handing it off to staff, I'm going to go ahead and introduce this item to Council. This is an agenda item that I asked staff to put together and that I'm sponsoring. So for those of you that are not aware, the AST, Austin Independent School District, put together a draft consolidation plan in October, earlier this month. And that draft consolidation plan was motivated by a number of factors, primarily the financial crunch that a lot of the public school districts are under, being underfunded and having to look at lower enrollments and some of the things that are going on at both the federal level and state level as far as funding for public schools. That draft consolidation plan is proposing closing a number of elementary schools, one middle school, two middle schools as well, 13 total campuses. We and the community at the school were caught off guard by Sunset Valley Elementary being one of the schools that is proposed to be closed. The process that went into this is looking across, you know, the demographics of the city, the needs of the students, where they are having special programs. Sunset Elementary right now is currently what's called a wall-to-wall dual-language program. That means that everybody enrolled in the school is getting essentially Spanish and English dual-language, usually paired with English as a second language learner with equal ratios with English as first language learners. And so the intention behind that is to really, you know, have a more immersive program for dual-language. It's something that a lot of our, you know, community that goes to that school really values. The proposal is that that program is going to be moving to another elementary school. There's been a lot of feedback from both the PTA, you know, staff and the larger community about the concerns about the plan, you know, how, you know, they provide that feedback and what the next steps are. I will say that the Board of Trustees for AST is on a very tight timeline that's been presented to them by the AST Administration. They are scheduled to vote on this plan on November 20th. And right now, AST is collecting feedback and there's going to be a new revision of the plan published next week, which will include some of that feedback. But as far as we can tell right now, that is not going to change the intention to close the elementary school. From the city perspective, I'll speak to, just in general, I'm a parent, you know, who has children who attend the school, you know, so putting that aside, you as a city, we really value that community and that elementary school. It's been part of our community for the last 54 years. It's gone through a lot of evolutions. The current community is great. There's a lot of support, you know, for the staff, the administration, the parents that go there, they're very involved. We would be, I think, losing something significant for our community if we didn't have that school available to not only our local residents, but the, you know, the larger neighborhoods and, you know, the transfers in that come to attend there. And so the intention behind this resolution is really to put a formal position of the city in place so that we can have formal discussions with AST regarding our feedback for the school closure. For many years, the city has provided services to the school that supplement what can be done outside of AST and even the city of Austin. That includes, you know, community policing. We do a lot of programming with the school. We invite the school to our functions and our educational events. We also, as an annual budget consideration, approve funding for the PTA with regards to grants. We also fund their PE's program for gardening and community engagement at that level. And so one of the first thing I did, just as my mayoral position, was write to all the trustees, giving them an overview of those services to inform them and educate them about what the city does in partnership with the school and what they'd be potentially losing by not having an educational venue within the city. So I did that immediately after the consolidation plan was put forward. Since that time, I've also been reaching out, you know, to the trustees that have responded. There was just this afternoon, a community event at Sunset Valley Elementary that was attended by AST Administration, including Superintendent Sugerah and two of the trustees. And they had an opportunity to hear feedback from the PTA, from the people that are, you know, attending the school and listen really to some of the concerns and give feedback. What I think, what I summarize that as is that right now, the community is looking to say, "If you have to move wall-to-wall, then let's make sure that's a, something that can be supported." But why are you closing the elementary school when it has this great location, you know, has these additional services that we may all provide? And why are you making some schools that may be in, you know, lower rubric ranking, you know, in terms of what AST has published themselves, into a non-zone opportunity? So what they're doing in some of these effects is making some campuses non-zone, which means that they can take people from all over the city. And so one of the things that we are emphasizing that discussion, or I've been emphasizing in, as my mayor position and formerly from the city's position, is that if you're going to make a non-zone campus, why not reconsider making Sunset Valley Elementary a non-zone campus and continuing it as an elementary school because we provide these benefits? So the intention behind this resolution, like I said, is if the city, if the city council agrees to it, that allows us to present it as a formal position of the city. I think that we have a strong argument to say that even if you're moving and consolidating some of the programs that are currently there, there's an opportunity for us to continue using that campus and benefit from the partnership that we've had for the last 54 years. So with that, I know that we have another parent also on city council who's provided input. I also appreciate the city administrator giving me some, you know, input as we develop this process as well. We're hopeful that we can continue this conversation with the AST regardless, you know, whether we have the resolution or not. The other thing, of course, is that if they close the campus, we have a vested interest in what happens to that property. And, you know, AST has promised to make that a community-driven process, but of course, ultimately, it's going to be, you know, what they think is of best interest to the community and what can work within our code of ordinances and regulations, which I've also put in my letter too, just to make sure that they were clear that it's not Austin. There's going to be a different, you know, set of circumstances they have to deal with. So that's why I wanted to have this resolution on the agenda item. I support it. I want to make sure that we have an official position. I think the school brings a lot of value to us, not only just from a community sense, it also has an economic impact to us as well. It brings a lot of people into our community. I'm sure that having an elementary school is going to affect, you know, people's property taxes and the values and I want to make sure that we're securing, doing our best to secure that as well. So with that, I'll open up for discussion by anybody else on council who has a discussion and then open up for the community if they want to comment on this before we go to a vote. Counselor Johnson?
This will be brief. Mark's very good. He's, you know, as two people that have children currently there, this has been an incredibly emotional couple of weeks. This is absolutely devastated. And I'll keep it together up here, but I'm just, I'm so happy that I have like this partner kind of like keeping it together. I'm like, you know, bad cop to his good cop, you know, I go in, I spoke tonight and I think Superintendent Sagerah was happy to see me leave at the end of it. But I just, I'm really struggling with the decision and we're doing all the things that we can. This, this resolution, I think these things do matter. And, you know, everything that our, everything that our police department does, everything that our administration does here at the city, everything our Public Works does to support them, what we do with our budget, the residents support the budget, support that we give money to them, not only because it's like a school in Texas that's struggling with finances, but, you know, it's okay to just say that it's, it's in our own self-interest as homeowners to have an excellent school right there. That's like what draws people to want to live here and, you know, one day if we have to sell. So it just ticks so many boxes and, you know, I said it was unfortunate that, you know, some schools are getting pitted against each other and just Jocelyn is almost like comically unfit as a location. Just go over there and you'll know what I mean. But, so I support this resolution. Again, Mark, thank you so much and thanks to all the, texted or emailed Matt as soon as I read that and immediately jumped on it, responded. And it was just like, "We're going to do everything we can to keep that school in our community." So I really, really appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments from Council for opening up for anybody in the public speaking? Mayor Pro Tem?
I had a comment and question. One, I wanted to say that I am not a parent, but I consider Sunset Valley Elementary an important part of what makes Sunset Valley Sunset Valley. And I'm fully in support of this resolution. I do have a couple of questions for staff, just to make sure I understand this correctly. The land that Sunset Elementary is on is part of Sunset Valley, correct?
It is, yes.
And it is zoned, single-family residential?
It's actually zoned GUI.
GUI, okay.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
In our code, we have limited uses for GUI, so that would obviously be a factor in any kind of redevelopment that happens there. It would have to come to city council if there was an intended use of it that didn't meet the GUI definitions. Counselor Brou?
Yeah, I also support the resolution. I think that it does an excellent job of capturing the, some of the non-tangibles that are important aspects about the relationship of the city with the school. I think the trustees in AISD, you know, surely they, it's tempting just to look at demographics and a financial bottom line, but there's, you know, there's, you know, of course, with all the schools, there's more to it than that, but certainly with Sunset Valley there is. And I think they should certainly be aware of that. I think this resolution does a good job of making that case.
Counselor Medicas?
Are you ready for a motion?
No, I was going to open up for public comments before we make a motion.
Okay, right, okay.
At this time, I'll open up for the public to speak to this item if they wish to.
Sue Koble again, Four Pillow Road. This is the first I heard about this. I thought there were, so is it that they were going to close Jocelyn? Because that's what I thought and now they're closing Sunset Valley instead?
So they have been working since earlier this year on a consolidation plan. AST has a large project in order to essentially try to address the budget shortfall and prevent potential takeover by the Texas Education Agency, which has happened in Houston and I believe in Dallas. So one of the things that could trigger that is obviously having a shortfall in budget and not having the money to run schools. And so the consolidation plan initially what was made available was a rubric on schools that had, that had the lowest scoring on the rubric and Jocelyn was one of those.
Yeah.
Along with, you know, like other schools like Covington, things like that. They could, AISD would not release details about the consolidation plan prior to publication. It got published earlier this month and, like I said, to my surprise and I think to the communities at Sunset Elementary, and Jocelyn was not one of the schools that was being proposed to be closed in order to meet this consolidation goal. Sunset Elementary was one of the schools that proposed to be closed. There's a lot of factors that AST can cite for the reasoning behind that. We, I think, have a good argument to say that there are values that may not have been considered as a result of, you know, the fact that,
Right.
you know, not everyone's aware the city of Sunset Valley exists as a separate entity or some of the services we provide. So this is, the first time we heard of it, I would say was two and a half weeks ago, two weeks ago. But that's now, that's the plan. That's a draft plan. That's not official until the Board of Trustees votes on it. And of course, the plan could alter between the draft publication and when the Board votes on it, but they are scheduled to vote on it on November 20th.
Okay, pardon me, allergies. But so I have been trying to keep abreast, Community Impact, American Statesman, reading about it. My kids are, my youngest is in college, so it doesn't affect me directly, except I live two houses from it. My kids had an excellent experience there. It was, of the schools they've attended, it was the best. And in a lot of ways. Is there anything that I, as someone who, who had kids there?
Yes, there's a, there's a open public comment period right now where you can go to the AST website through October 28th where you can provide direct feedback to the school. That's the easiest and best way to contribute to the conversation. Of course, you know, it's collected altogether, but I think it's specifically stating the reasons why you think Sunset Valley Elementary would potentially benefit AST by maintaining an educational curriculum there in some fashion would be my recommendation. And I'd recommend any of our residents who are interested in keeping the elementary school to go to the AST website, school consolidation page and go to the link for providing.
Okay.
Feedback. And like I said, it's open through the 28th of October.
Yeah, it seems like that would be. Yeah, it seems like that would be a good, Jocelyn has a really loud, I mean, I'm not, I'm speaking of the choir, I guess, but parent group. And I, maybe we need to have that. And so I can be a part of that. I don't know if it's still true, but back when we were there, the PTA at Sunset Valley Elementary was award-winning. Like, that's another point that we need to make, which is that the parents of the community may not be vocal to the media, but they are very supportive of the, the kids who go to that school. And I think that would be a real shame if they closed that. So I will write to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak at this time? And that does bring up a, maybe an interesting point, that it might be useful to tell the community and inform the community if they're not aware that this is on the proposal through a communication and providing, not a, you know, providing information based on the resolution, whether it's been adopted or not, but also just directing them to provide comments. Like I said, it, it does end at the end of this month, so relatively soon, we need to get that communication out.
So it would need to go up before the newsletter then? Because the newsletter publishes, so it would need to go out promptly this week?
Yeah, and I, I would appreciate, it sounds like some members of the community weren't aware of this, and I think that that's important for them to be aware of and that there is an opportunity for right feedback. I will get with Caitlin on that. Thank you. Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. And I, probably not a mailing either, just, or maybe a mailing and an email and a text and like you use. Because again, you know, we, we know because our kids go and got the email from them. But just anyone else in the community. And we don't need to turn council into this, but the, the most striking thing was, or the reason it came out of such left field, in their own data rubric, Sunset Valley was the highest scoring out of the four elementary schools in southwest Austin. And it was like, yeah, that one. And it's one that I did not even, I have a daughter that goes to Covington, and that was the one I was more worried about. And so I put this whole thing into it, not like I'm the tipping point or anything, but I was like, Sunset Valley, it'll be fine. They're okay. But, so appreciate, anyone else here if they get a communication or just go to the AISD website? Thank you.
Great. Any further discussions or is there a motion?
What? Does that mean then? A move we, pass a resolution supporting the continued operation of Sunset Valley Elementary School.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
All right. Hold us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold opposed? All right. Thank you, council, for supporting that resolution. And I'll be working with staff on the next steps in order to make sure that our feedback is heard by ASD and the board of trustees. All right, we are on our last agenda item before we go into executive session. This is a presentation discussion regarding the maintenance responsibilities for residential right-of-way and drainage ditches. I will defer to council or Mayor Portem whether you want to introduce this item or if you want staff to introduce this item. I'll hand it over to you.
I'll let staff introduce the item so they can give everyone the background.
Great, thank you. All right, so hand it over to staff for background on this item.
So this year in July, we were, the city awarded a new landscaping contract to Yellowstone Landscaping. That contract did not include the mowing of the residential right-of-way. This was discussed at city council meetings, and it was based on a recommendation from the Planning and Environmental Committee. There have been, and this actually aligns with the city code, that it is the responsibility of the homeowners to run, mow to the curb line. And so historically, the city has mowed some of this right-of-ways, although this is not a standard that most, any municipalities do, as these function as, you know, easements and utilities and things of that nature. There have been some residents who have expressed concerns about steep drainage ditches and some feel that they can't maintain those, this area, or if they're elderly. So I know Councilmember Young has requested a discussion of this item here as regards to the maintenance challenges. I would say from a staff perspective, we would be still maintaining the area as a function of, for drainage. We would still be coming in twice a year, probably mowing, moving, removing leaves, making sure everything's going to be flowing the way it's supposed to. And it just would not have the aesthetic benefit of bi-weekly mowing that would be happening. So we did discuss the options of like a, kind of like a mulch delivery program where people who felt like they could not maintain that right-of-way, there was a fee. And I know Councilmember Young has requested some other kind of program as far as based on some other criteria that would not be a paid option. And so that is kind of where we're at right now.
Mayor Portem?
The reason I brought up this item was I talked to several residents, including Mr. Peplis-Lisa, about their difficulties that they would face in doing this, where they have steep ditches that really require special equipment that I don't think they should be, have to, have to buy. And others who are elderly or have, you know, other kinds of difficulties with, with taking care of these things. In a lot of cases, it's not their whole property that is a problem. It's just one section of the property where, where we have these, you know, these steep ditches. My understanding is that these ditches were created by the city to enhance drainage. Is that a correct assumption?
That is correct, yes.
And there were been cases in the past, at least one that I know of, where somebody had filled it in so they didn't have the problem of having to try to, to maintain that. And the city came and said, we have to, we need the drainage ditch here, we need to have it out again. I think the city should take some responsibility for helping reticents maintain these things. Like, a lot of people, for instance, I don't care, right? We have a service that comes and does ours, and I don't, I do not have that steep ditch. It's not a, it's not a hardship for me at all. But it is for some. And I think we should have a program where we say, for residents who are elderly or who lack the equipment or have some other kind of hardship, that the city can come in and do it for them. We have the capacity. We're offering to do it where they pay us. We have the capacity to do it. The amount of money is negligible in terms of city finances. But it may be a hardship for home, for homeowners, particularly ones who are on fixed incomes. So I think we should have a program that says, if you qualify under whatever criteria we decide on, which I think is you're elderly or this is very steep and you need special equipment to do this, that the city should take care of this for them.
Thank you. And that was, I think, one of the, the options that, you know, staff and I discussed after hearing your feedback from this is that, yes, acknowledging that there are residents that can't do this by themselves, right? And there's some type of way for the city to provide that assistance. It, you know, I, we had intentionally taken that off of the contract in order to both, you know, our, our code, but I think also to save money. I don't know how much would be if we wanted to add it back in the contract, but I also don't think that that necessarily, we don't necessarily want the contract to include that because a lot of residents are doing it themselves, or they don't need, you know, that right-of-way mowing. So it's really just kind of localized or specialized cases where the need is there due to, you know, the, this was a resident's ability to do that, but also the landscape, you know, of the steepness of the ditch and things like that. So I do want to find that happy medium where we're not paying over ser, overpaying for services, right, from a contractual standpoint, but we can still provide means to do that. And I'm open to, you know, council feedback on how we might look at that from a program standpoint if council thinks that that's a priority. I'm in agreement that we need to have some sort of way for people to access that. And how we craft that, you know, that would be up to council to see if we can make sure that it doesn't, you know, overtax staff and not prevent the residents from getting a service that they can't provide themselves. So, open up for further discussion.
Just one comment.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry, Matt.
Just something else that we wanted to highlight is we've, we've heard from several residents, staff has over the years, just in regards to drainage in general. And so I think as we prepare for our next round of CIP, since we have heard a lot of comments regarding drainage, we want to have a special drainage-focused session, town hall. I believe we're going to start those after the new year, after the calendar, the calendar new year. So we'll definitely advertise that. But I think, you know, one, something the city may want to look at for a long-term solution to some of these really steep dishes, ditches are, you know, adding pipes and putting soil over so that we, we eliminate the, you know, the need for this. It's just something to consider for the long term.
Councilor Johnson, then Councilor Medicas?
How did, how did residents find out that, my, my grass is not growing right now? So it's just like, I wouldn't know. But how did residents find out that is, someone down Reese, I know who wants this back. And, and I was wondering if it was like growing or if they just?
The new contract started October 1st, so if it was a bi, I mean, was Texas Cape doing it bi-weekly? So it probably, yeah.
But they're not reading the contract.
They put it in the newsletter.
Oh, it was in the newsletter.
In the newsletter, okay, cool. In, in the interim, how, how big of a pain is it to just, until we figure out what the plan is to just?
Grass isn't really growing.
Exactly, yeah. So I guess if it's?
Now, I don't think we need to mow anything.
Right, okay. If we get, if it, if it rains, then maybe just run out there until we get a better, better plan.
I mean, as we mentioned, we would maintain it for drainage functions to make sure it was draining and it was working properly.
Right. I, I kind of like the idea of just like, just doing proper kind of like, proper pipes and just having it flat and then just saying, now you can do it. And it's just a little bit more land. This is like one of the rare, I do say so myself, one of the rare times where we kind of, yeah, we kind of biffed it. We just didn't think about certain, because mine is just like flat right to the street and?
Yeah.
So, our bad. But, so I guess, yeah, continue to work on it and figure out what the, what the best approach is. Sorry for you guys in the situation. If we thought about it a little deeper, maybe we would have just kept the landscaping team on it.
I don't think that was a solution that was in the city's best interest from a financial standpoint or necessarily from a resident's standpoint if they're over mowing, for example. That's the other feedback we have. Councilor Medicas?
So just what the mayor just said about over mowing, that was one of the big issues with the Planning and Environmental Committee is that when we had the contract for that to automatically be done, they were just mowing dirt. And, and mowing, when they did mow, they mowed too short. And so that was one of the considerations that Planning and Environmental had when they suggested that we don't contract for mowing of the right-of-ways. So I just wanted to make sure. I, I do think that long-term, we should look at the overall drainage of the city and putting in pipes. That makes a lot of sense to me for the next CIP project. But a lot of people on Pillow have walls, so there's nothing to mow. And then some of our neighbors have actually planted all the way up to the curb. So they don't want that cut down either. So, you know, I don't know if you can make everybody happy. I think it's a long-term solution that we need to look at for drainage in the overall city.
Councilor Burrell?
Yeah, the, you know, this issue, there, there are a number of sort of independent intersecting spheres that have to happen for this to be an issue. I mean, there has to be a geography with, with the ditch at, at a certain property. It has to be a person that for some, for whatever reason, is unable to, to handle that mowing. Perhaps there may be some fiscal, financial issues in terms of ability to pay. Then it, I guess, from my perspective, I guess, it would be helpful to me to have some kind of, to get some kind, I think in terms of a proper response by the city, it would be helpful to know what, you know, basically, how big is this issue? How big is the problem? I mean, obviously, if you, if we ask people, you know, would you like the city to mow you, mow part of your yard for you? Most people would say yes. I know I would. But the question really is, is, you know, what, what's, what's the, what is the need out there for this, for this matter? Is it just a few people, we, well, the city maybe can, can handle that in a way that would be both better from a performance perspective as well as a fiscal perspective? And it satisfies that need if it's more widespread, and maybe we should do something else. I guess my point is that it would be helpful to have a little more information about how big the problem really is.
Mayor Portem?
I agree with Councilmember Burrell. We should, we should understand how big the problem is. I'm kind of assuming that this doesn't affect that many residents. But I also think we shouldn't be doing things in a city with the resources that we have that cause hardships for some of our citizens. And that's, that's, that's my biggest concern here. I mean, I agree with also what Councilmember Medicas said. And I know that Planning and Environmental had said, and I've seen this too, where they were over mowing. And I don't think we should change the contract to have the contractors mow the, the ROWs. But I think we should address where it affects some of our citizens and is a real hardship for them.
Any further discussion before I open up for feedback from the public? All right, at this time, I'd invite the public to speak to this item.
Okay, Robert Pavelis, 26 Sunset Trail. And from the discussion I just heard, it's going to answer many of the points or questions that I had here. As a matter of fact, a lot of what I heard is very favorable. But here's what I picked up out of this agenda item number 12, maintenance responsibilities. Pardon me. It's very harsh because it reads like this. For example, under, unless this can be cleared up, I may be reading it from the opposite side of the coin. City Code 93.50 listed under item 12. It mentions the residential owners of the right-of-way, which is another type of discussion. I'm not so sure that the homeowner owns so much right-of-way and the city owns so little of the subject matter right-of-way. We'll, we'll go past that. It mentions under this 93.50 is the homeowner would be responsible for no grass obstruction, would be responsible for no stagnant water. And we'll come back to that one. And then the next one under, that's listed under this item 12, City Code 93.51. Until I'm corrected here, does it read in the right-of-way that the homeowner may need to do sanitary improvements? The, the rest of this is mostly questions that might have already been answered. But let me point out about some things that we all should all know about Sunset, Reese, Pillow, and Low Note, as everything flows toward the creek. Has anyone counted, as I have all of the, not, not on every street, all of the culverts, the ditches and culverts, pipes, if you will, on just one street? And how many residential homes are on just one side or two sides of one of these streets? Can you picture some of the residents, male and female, out in that ditch with mowers and weed eaters and looking for what kind of obstructions are at the culvert? The, one, one more item at least here. This is, this is a sentence, this is going to be a quote that was written up in, under item 12. And if I've copied it correctly, it reads like this, quote, this under staff position. This position is based less on cost and more on principle and practicality, quotation closed. And so I feel like this sounds a little harsh, but it feels like the, the resident is being punished here for some reason. And the last item, cost. I, I hear very reasonable attitudes on how this can be done. It, this, this doesn't have to be a large-scale, every square inch and every square foot of every road and every ditch and every place in Sunset Valley, possibly, possibly has already been discussed, the really needed areas. And so as a resident, and I see funds going every which way, my question is, are we allocating, if, if funds were a problem, are we allocating funds to the projects that are? If, if funds were a problem, are we allocating funds to the projects that are more important? Or any project that would be more important than keeping the drainage and culverts and ditches in correct order to prevent flooding? And, in summary, let me say that a lot of the things that I was very concerned about, it looks like could be discussed here. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Hi there. Thank you, Mayor, Councilwoman, Melissa Gonzalez, 26 Reese. I'm gonna start out with, when we redid Reese. When we redid Reese, the engineers said to me that they were gonna even create, create the ditches where you could park on them. And then, lo and behold, they made the ditches worse in front of my property. My understanding and my memory is Coleman, who had Liz Wright's property before Liz Wright's had it, had covered it over, had this beautiful yard he was just so proud of. And then I think that it was when they did the street that they reopened the ditch. And, and according to Robert, I, I think that it worked just fine, but we created the problem at Liz's, I think. But I do remember that his, his lawn was a true thing of beauty, that he was out there taking care of till he passed. So those are just things. So then, we've talked about some people, especially in the meadows, who wanted to cover up their, their ditches. And, the cost was pretty high. It was not an insignificant cost. It got snuck into the budget, and I asked about why that happened. So then, so it's not a small amount of money. And so, we talked about it in Public Works, and we said, "Well, it's..." Randy McAmell said, "It's better for the environment to have ditches, that's why we do it. If we're just piping, then you're not treating the water. The ditches actually treat the water. So if we care about being environmental, then we care about the ditches." And so, this is, this was, these are all of my competing things over the time. I'm not, so I'm, I'm not saying this is an easy thing. I, I listened, I was on Environmental, I heard this, I went along with it. There are things that I would do differently, you know, if I was really taking care of the property. When I was on South First, I got yelled at by the city of Austin. They said, "You can't put in irrigation there." I said, "I wasn't planning on putting irrigation, I'm just putting gravel in what they call the hell strip around my property." You know? And they said, "Okay." But, I mean, they're, they're watching every little thing in Austin about what you're doing in that right-of-way. And, so there's, there's a lot of parts, there are a lot of moving parts. And I've listened to it from Public Works, I've listened to it from Planning and Environmental, it's in budget. I, I mean, this is, this is not a, a discussion that, that we haven't had. But, but I think people should be aware of all that. There are, there are environmental concerns. If we're an environmental city, that's one of the reasons we have the bar ditches, right? You're treating water. If you're gonna make it, if you're gonna demand that we become like Austin and want people to maintain it, well, people who maintain it don't have ditches, they generally have it flat. I don't know of a city that I've been in that has ditches that, like that, that requires you to take care of it. And, and I think if I saw my good friend out there on a, a challenging mower, I would get worried. You know, on a slow mower. I, I can think of any number of people in our aging city who should not be out there taking care of it. And, and if we all of a sudden require it, well, then we're putting people at risk. That's a health and safety issue. And that's what we're about, is health and safety. So, and, and then, when, when we sit here, and I, and I penny pinched all of this on Environmental and on budget and on Public Works. And, then we come up with a million, five, six, ten people say, "Have we run out of money, Melissa?" I've had a resident ask me that. And it's like, clearly, at the end of the budget, it's pretty frustrating to say, "No, we have not remotely run out, there's like over a million dollars left, and we're saying there's not enough money to do this." So, this is a high priority when you look at that list. So, I appreciate how difficult a decision it is. And I, I believe that we certainly can take care of the people who shouldn't be taken care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe else wish to speak at this time?
All right, can I ask you one?
Yes, please go ahead.
I just wanna reiterate too, to members of the public council, the city, they are the city's drainage, drainage, ditches, and we will maintain them to, to keep functionality. You know, we're, we won't maintain necessarily for aesthetics, but we will maintain for functionality. So, it's, it's not like we're never gonna touch, you know, no matter what happens with these ditches, we're gonna maintain them to make sure that the water flows. If there's any obstructions, we'll remove them. And as the Public Works Director said, we'll do bi-annual maintenance of all of our drainage dishes. It's why we have a drainage fund, it's why everyone is charged a drainage fee monthly. So, just, just, no matter what happens with this or in the future, the drainage dishes will be maintained for functionality to make sure that stormwater is flowing, flowing and taken away, so.
Water was a thing that I didn't say, and there's still several with standing water. And, and as he said, standing water then becomes the resident's issue, and that's another thing that, that is a factor that we should make sure we address. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, City Manager, for also making sure the council and the residents are aware of that, or clarified on that fact. So, from what I mean, it's not an action, this is a discussion item only, but what I'm hearing from council feedback is if staff, I'll work with you, or I think actually, Mayor Burrell, since you wanna sponsor this, are you sponsoring this item? To come back with a potential alternative for, or, or proposal that council can act, can actually take action on. I think as part of that, we obviously wanna know the scope of the needs that might be met by whatever proposal it is per Councilmember Burrell's point. And so, a future council meeting, we'd have more data to make that decision and also a proposed plan that could service the needs that, that would be identified by the data.
I would be glad to work with staff to help identify possible areas where this may be a problem.
All right, so, we will bring this item back as a future agenda item for possible action. With that, council, we are now ready to convene into executive session if there's a motion. This is gonna be for the evaluation, the annual evaluation of the city administrator. At this time, Councilor Johnson.
A move we convene into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074 for the deliberation of personnel matter, personnel matters for the annual performance evaluation of the city administrator and possible contractual amendments.
Say your second for that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So at this time, members of the public, we're gonna be moving into executive session. We will not be taking any action there. I would, I'd say that any, there's, you know, unless you're wanting to stick around for a while and hear us vote on anything that we take action on, it'll, it'll probably be a little bit of time before we come back. But there's no other agenda items that we're gonna be covering tonight. That's, we've already covered all the business that we need to. Thank you for all attending. We're going into executive session at this time at 7:04.
Who is this for? I don't think we even looked at that.
Okay, are we good as far as recording?
Major.
Yep. We're good? Yeah. All right, we're resuming open session at 8:01 PM. And council at this time, if you want to make a motion, Councilor Monica.
Um, motion to approve the city administrators evaluation and a merit increase.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Uh, thank you Matt for your service. And at this point, we can take a motion to adjourn.
I may adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 8:01 PM.